One nation, for God and in this all with the routine justice to throw.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome. Call meeting to order.
amended.
Yeah, amended, amended to add drainage D D eighty and anything else?
This is application for driveway.
Driveway application.
Well, can we put that on with Ben? Driveway with Ben and then drainage after or how you wanna do it?
Put that on with Ben.
We'll blame it on Ben.
You got broad shoulders?
Sure.
So what are you gonna do nine fifteen for drainage or nine?
I don't know. Do we need to wait? Do we need thirty one and nine to talk to Ben? To sign the thing, so.
For the bids.
Yeah, let's see. I think we got time. Yeah. Is there anything else needs added?
No.
I'll make the motion to accept that then with those directions.
I'll second.
Give the discussion, all favor. Both saying minutes of April twenty second.
To them, a lot of stuff there looks correct, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other discussions, all favor? You're no public concern. Everybody here today. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
You're a little early. I suppose technically we've gotta wait till nine to open those bids.
Yeah.
But you can, can we do everything else with it?
We can do everything else.
Let's do everything else with it, go to drainage and wait for the bids.
That's great.
Okay.
Uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right of way with Midland Power. This is to switch an overhead service to underground at uh, the Kevin Collier residence. Right now it spans overhead from the south side to the north. They're gonna switch that underground and then also connect to the acreage to the east. In the south side, so it's gonna turn around a couple hundred feet in the south ditch at the back.
You good with all, everything?
Yep, I went out and looked at it. They've got everything staked. Looks good.
Well, I'm gonna make motion to approve that uh, project uh, for working the right of way. Amendment.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I'm guessing they'll probably have a hold on that for a while. Their, most of their crew went to Harlan.
Yes.
Been down there and probably be there for a while, the way it looks.
Yeah, between Harlan and towards the interns.
Oh my gosh.
But at least they'll be ready when they get ready.
All in favor of that? Driveway for names.
The uh, other item that was brought up, uh, we had a request for a one hundred foot driveway. I believe it was Ross Nate that told it in, but I think it's listed as Spencer for the applicant. They understand our rule that anything over a fifty foot driveway becomes their responsibility to make this. We don't make repairs on that pipe. We don't jet it. If it gets plugged, it's their baby. But it's longer than fifty feet, so it follows the county's guideline to get board approval.
And that'll be concrete pipe, yeah?
So C M P. Guessing steel, just because of the sheer cost.
Steel pipe, okay.
This has been looked at. They must have checked this out.
Dave's what that is. I have not.
But it's, yeah, cause he sent this out.
Will steel be able to support that big of a driveway that much?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's a lot of pipe in there and becomes maintenance issue, which is why we wash our hands.
Okay, that makes, yeah, that makes sense.
Cause in that agreement though, that is say if it's obstructing the flow of right of way water, then they do have to fix it. In other words, if it gets plugged up, you can, you can tell them that it.
Yeah, either fix it or we.
Or we're gonna fix it and we're gonna charge it for fixing it. We're not gonna maintain it for loss, cause it's a bigger driveway. So they've understood all that. So and everything else is in order for Dave's looking at it.
Yeah, others and it's absurdly long driveway.
Very, I'm sorry. Well, a hundred foot is big.
Well, I, the reason probably is so it can.
Trucks.
Stage.
Stage.
So they can, so they can stage.
Yeah, and they don't block the road, which, which is good.
It's better to have it in their driveway than it is on the road back and forth.
Yeah.
So it's probably an advantage to some degree.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make that motion to accept the application.
Second that. Any other discussion? All in favor? All carried.
Got a question for you, Ben. Now, we've had this discussion before about uh, working the right of way permits. Uh, currently we don't charge anything.
Correct.
You think that's something we need to address moving forward?
Just, just due to the.
I mean, cause it takes a lot of your time to go out or someone's time to go out and who doesn't like the locates? Who calls in locates?
The uh, applicant is the one that's responsible. The people that are doing the work are the ones that are responsible. Associated with it. So like in this instance, the Midland Power that calls in the locates is the ones that are generated.
Do it, do it, yeah.
But there's still county time involved. We're going out, reviewing it, uh, obviously bringing it in here, uh, researching what the right of way is in that vicinity and staking it if needed. The County Engineers Association is in the process of trying to come up with a work in the right of way permit that we can utilize statewide so that we're all.
That's a good idea.
Do you think that will be coming here in the near future or is that something like a year or two away or?
I hope we'd see something here in the next year.
So you're talking like a flat fee that we could charge in order to do that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some counties out there that.
They do it now.
They charge uh, the work in the right of way fee. Uh, there's counties out there that charge a fee for driveway permits. There's not a whole lot of counties out there that aren't charging for their services. I can, I, I can talk to surrounding counties and find out what, if anything, that they are charging for utility permits. I know Wright County's charging. They've got some pretty exorbitant fees, but they're also dealing with gas emissions, C O T pipeline coming through, I think.
That, that's what I'm saying. If something, something like that affected our county, you'd be spending a ton of your time permitting all that crap.
Right. So there's uh, some of those provisions, they allow you to hire outside engineering to handle all of the permitting, all of the applications. And the company that's applying for it basically just pays them. Their time and energy, so. But I can do some checking and see where we're at on that permit.
Okay.
So you were asking me just the fee for a permit?
Right.
What about the fee if they don't get the permit and we find out? That does happen occasionally.
Penalty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got language in there for penalties right now.
Have you enforced that for the.
Kind of, kinda like what happened out for the occasional.
By your place where they dug without a, a permit and.
Left an open hole in the ditch.
It was an open hole for ten days or something like that. It was, we charged ten days penalty, whatever it was.
And people that should cer- should certainly know better.
Did they ever pay that ten day penalty?
I've checked, you know, I know we've invoiced them.
So you do that, if they don't get a permit and you find out about it, you haven't forced the penalty phase.
Yeah, the, the difficulty, about the only thing that we can hold over them for failure to pay is we don't approve it.
Next time they go out and ask for permit, you can say you ain't gonna get until.
That can be a pretty big deal if you're uh, in the right of way utility, like phone companies.
Yeah, but I mean, landlines are.
There's a whole bunch of other stuff though that they keep putting in.
Yeah, I mean anymore, those same companies are the ones that are gonna put in fiber.
Yeah.
Let us know what you find out.
Sure.
Anything else, Phil?
That was all I have. I wouldn't.
Make the motion.
If you wanna do.
Move down to approve the waiver of thirty day waiting period for variance. Randy?
You recall, I just brought that up, so that if possible, I didn't know for sure, but if possible to uh, weigh that, being that there was no opposition or no one there at the hearing to say any opposition or you see no written, things like that. I was just doing that for expediating the poss- possibility for them. The last I remember the discussion was that uh, you would check on the, on the ordinance from John on uh, on whether that would be a lawsuit. And uh, again, I just did it for expedience for this would be. The uh, ordinance, the way I read it, it just simply says you have the thirty days. And so I understand why. I wish it would have written a little bit different. I think that's important to stay long. But I don't know whether or not that's a possibility. I don't know if you talked with him or not, so. If not, if not, we would just simply state to them that they would have the thirty days from the time that I was uh, reported to you that they had that approved.
I haven't heard nothing from anybody. Question on this was, is this really a board of supervisors decision or this was but, this was approved by the board of adjustments? They don't, that, that went in front of the board of adjustments, correct? The application and they see no issue with this.
But the thing is, the board of supervisors has thirty days to ask the board of adjustments to, to relook.
Review it.
So if but we're not asking them to review it.
No.
They, they have no issue with it and we don't disagree with it.
No, you know, the, the discussion that was it would have to be checked on, done. I was assuming that that had been done. So if, if it, if that hasn't been, I don't want code three, three thirty five, it probably is in there somewhere, but I don't wanna be in a situation where I try to interpret that. But I, I just wouldn't wanna be in that situation. So if that not, has not been discussed or determined. I mean, it does say that they're up to thirty days, but if there's any other language that says you can't make that shorter by saying go ahead, then I would say not to do that before the thirty days. If, if we haven't had uh, the verification on that. I'll just, I'll give them the thirty day, day so that they don't have.
Well, I.
Go ahead, Rick.
I don't think we even need to, cause are you hearing any us saying, we have any questions on it? No.
Well, I'm assuming that the thirty days is to allow you to look at the minutes uh, or look at the
or the, you know, the things that went on, the hearings, so on and so forth. Usually there's somebody that's mad and they don't like your ju- your ru- the rulings and then we have, discuss it with them and then say, yeah, you got a point. Take it back and have them review it. There's no, nothing out here.
That's, yeah, where I'm coming from, there was no dissent from the board of adjustments saying no. And this other party. Party saying, we don't disagree. We want that thirty day review. We can, like Rick this day, we can look at it, send it back to the board of adjustments. If we're not seeing that, I don't see any reason.
They still go the legal. We don't wanna I don't, I don't wanna put you in a situation where you say, okay, less than thirty days, go ahead.
That's why we're not gonna do that. Just, I mean, you can tell these people that, hey, there's, there's nothing out there.
Yeah, there's no opposition.
There's no opposition.
But there may, there would maybe be. Let's say we told them now.
Yeah, okay, on say day twenty nine, somebody come in and I.
Right.
I'd say, well, that's, that's nice, but you're a little late.
Yeah, that's just what I was gonna say. If somebody's opposing it, they should have heard it from last week when it, you know, or whenever the was brought before and they should have came forward right away. But if they come day twenty, even day twenty, twenty five. Yeah, the neighbors were right. The neighbors were sent a letter, correct?
Oh, yeah, everything.
I mean, so.
Notices and letters and everything, but.
Yeah.
Again, I don't wanna get to day twenty nine and, and somebody puts in an appeal, right? And you already said, okay, go ahead.
But it has to be the board of supervisors that puts in the appeal, correct? Not, not somebody.
They have to appeal it to us.
I think we're getting.
It would have to, yeah.
Two things confuse. This waiver, well, the thirty day waiting period must come from the side of the board of adjustments because it's, they granted an adjustment. Correct? This was something that they had to approve. The way I read this ordinance, the board of adjustment had their meeting, they approved it. They kick it to the supervisors. The supervisors have thirty days to accept the board's decision or throw it out. That gets thrown back to the board of adjustment. But we accept it. Complaints, we accept it. I agree. I think Dave's on the right track. We accepted the board's judgment and go along with it.
Obviously, that's was my intent, okay? But from our discussion last week, without John making a clarification if there needed to be, uh, I wouldn't wanna put you in that situation. I, I, I understand that's why he did it, but you have, they're up to thirty days. But at this point, if you said, yeah, go ahead, there may be something with that law that I'm not aware of. Without John's uh, you know, approval, I, I would resent my recommendation now.
Well, perhaps.
Just, just simply because I don't wanna make, I wanna make sure that, you know, somebody would appeal what you're, what you're saying.
Who was gonna talk to John? I would.
Perhaps you should check with them, Randy. I mean, being just, you have the thought process on this couldn't.
In our discussion, I wasn't here personally, but in our discussion, I mean, I think it was Sandy said, well, we need to check with John. So I assume that would be you guys, but I, I would say rather than going through all of that right now, I would say I'll resent my recommendations. We'll just go ahead with the thirty days. I don't wanna, you know, I'm just trying to do it as.
Table it and Dave's.
I make a motion to table it.
I'll second that. We asked Dave if he had the time in the next week or so to touch it. There you go. Okay.
So we table them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta load on it.
Yeah, load it on next week. We got a motion to second to table it. All favor?
Aye.
All carried, David. We good to go into drainage now?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll make a motion that we go into drainage.
I'll second.
Okay. All favor, aye. We're out of general session and drainage.
Oh, this is drainage, just is nothing to go. That, this is just signing a paper. For this project.
We've got a city contract. That's right, Dave. Don't run off too far. It's second day, boy. Right, Shelley?
Yeah, it's pretty quick. Okay, so I have for Drainage District eighty, Branch D. I just have notice to proceed. I just need a bunch of signatures.
Looking at the applications and uh, the different contractors.
Yeah.
It's basically that the board of supervisors is authorizing this to take place and Dave signs it. Show that we are.
And it's for blacktop service to do the roads.
And Doyle for the construction.
For the pipe works.
And then a copy for the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we got that figured out. I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign, what are these called?
Notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed for D D eighty branch.
D.
E.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All favor?
That usually makes it rain.
Well.
We've had, how much already have we had?
Not a lot. From Friday to yesterday or last night, we had probably one point two inches.
The good news is it's one point two that.
It was soft for, I mean, it just, yeah.
Oh, it was beautiful. Ended up getting a really nice shower yesterday today.
Did you really?
Yeah.
It rained nice.
Where were you?
In town working, but I went home and I didn't even have what I needed.
Later in the day.
It's so spotty.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah.
The best thing is, I don't remember any tornadoes or anything.
We do have a few windy days, but.
I said my brother lived in Oklahoma almost, well, over thirty years. And the closest he ever came to tornadoes was moved back to Des Moines.
There's some ugly stuff. Do you have anything else?
No, that is it.
Shelley is good with drainage.
In the face.
Are we getting any work orders, anything?
I've had a few. A few, but not a whole lot, just a couple of, the last couple of weeks.
Well, nothing, anybody else? Motion to go out of drainage.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. So I'll keep the gentle strip. Our drainage used to last about an hour and a half to two hours.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
It used to be pretty, it's a little more. Careful what you say.
Fun.
Could happen. We had that with this project.
Yeah, that first year I was on the board. Drainage, whenever I saw drainage on the. That is it.
Aren't you glad we authorized you to sign that?
Every neighbor gets one the way it looks.
Okay, that is.
Still have my motion to go on. Have you got anything else for drainage?
Huh?
You got anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, I got a motion. All favor? We're out of drainage and back in general. So thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Send Trish back. We're back from our general session.
We probably have time to do our.
Well, I ended up last week being busy, but no official meetings. One of them got supposedly rescheduled for this week. It was, but at any rate, uh, so I didn't, yeah, nothing, nothing official extra meetings last week.
I didn't have any official meetings either. I did speak with Todd from Conservation. And I think we need to get our dam moving forward. And I suggested that uh, I haven't even talked to Bruce yet. That, that Bruce and I get together with Todd and then one other person from Conservation and visit with Homeland Security and the D N R sit down together and get things moving. Because these uh, grants are gonna go away.
Right.
And I think the river groups, Bruce is on that group. Uh, I think he needs to be there so he can give his voice. And we can hear the numbers together. If he's interested in going, otherwise Dave could go.
Whatever works, I guess depending on where, when.
How your schedule is or.
Oh, try to make it work.
Okay.
Good idea.
Cause if we just sit on it, clock's a ticking.
I know, it's, we're gonna lose altogether.
But that's, that's all I had this week. I did talk with Jeff Ives over here about um, some other business and um, another thing I was reading, Dickerson County up there, they did some changing to the uh, wind turbine ordinance. And I think that's something we need to review too, here in the near future.
All right. On Tuesday night, I went to Ford Dodge and uh, for the Edmo meeting. April had mentioned last week that, that uh, Edmo is having some issues with, and we are um, trying to move some, some costs around to I guess, long story short, so that hours aren't cut at some of our Edmo offices. Humble is probably one of the smaller ones, so our numbers are down anyway, so we probably would be one, we wouldn't feel the the cost uh, or the cutting hours the way some of the other towns would, but I mean, they're talking a pretty good chunk of change that they're trying to figure out where they can come up with that money. So right now that's on our, and we got forming a committee to try to work through some of that. On Thursday, uh, CFR met down in Iowa City, you know, I didn't go, I zoomed the meeting. Um, they were considering a, an expansion down there on that facility that they purchased and when the cost came in, they just said it was too high. So they kind of tabled that. They are doing a campaign um, raising money in the Des Moines area for that facility down there. Because as we all know, um, drug and alcohol use continues to be huge and the walk-in people that they have is just off the charts. So they're trying to uh, add on to the one in Des Moines. It's kind of a sad reflection on our society, but I guess trying to move forward with it. Then on uh, Friday, I went down to Eldora for the juvenile detention uh, meeting. First, I do have our, on the, they put in our paperwork, the fees and the rates, so it makes it a little easier to try to figure out, um, knock on wood, we're still holding our own. Uh, some of the other counties are struggling. But I guess thank God we aren't one of those counties, so. Uh, the other thing, and I'm, I'm just talking with Rick Rasmussen because they sent out a letter this past year with their uh, budget. When they were dealing with some of these places that are always, you know, yearly asking for money. And they sent a letter out with their requests and their, and I need to get a, we need to get a copy of that letter. I just think that there's gonna come a time, our funds keep getting cut off in Des Moines and there's gonna come a time where we aren't gonna have that money to keep dealing. And I know it sucks, but sooner or later, um, otherwise we're gonna have the same thing we had two weeks ago when people are in here about their taxes, mad and whatever. Um, so I think Wright County sent this letter out and I hate to be the one to bring it up, but we might have to follow suit and say we're gonna have to look at every penny that we spend because people are getting tired of tax, tax, tax. And I'm one of them, so that's what I had for the week.
The other thing I had was, um, I talked with Allison Hauser, it was all on the phone. There was no official meeting, I think we're we're trying to get a time um, put together with Haley um, King. I think that's how you say her name, it's K.E.I.H., and I'm not sure. But anyway, Bruce and I are gonna, cause Bruce is on CFRs for the opioid. I know it, but I thought since you're, but I, she is having great success over in Pocahontas and Palo Alto, so I think that it'd be a very good use of our funds, and then we'll bring it to the board. We'll have Bruce, so he hears, cause he knows about CFR, and then we'll bring up, bring it in from the board then next Monday for approval. If, if Bruce thinks it's.
The only way that, and just, this is the way we were, it was explained to us, anything that is used with the opioid. And it has to be earmarked and it has to be traced because when they come back and they say, well.
They do an audit or something.
And it all goes through public health.
Yep.
Hum, or Humboldt, Public Health.
So.
Is how it, so we know that it's, and that's why it's, I think it'd be, this is a cleaner way than.
Us trying to do it on our.
Correct, correct.
And that's what I told Sandy the other day when she called, I said, as long as we have the, the ability to track it.
Mm-hmm.
Because if Trish is up here trying to figure out where did that money go?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be a nightmare.
We've already talked with, um, Kristin Sewell of Public Health, and she's, and we've had a meeting with all of us, and she's very. Agreeable with this, she thinks it's a very good program. And then we'll get with the school.
We're doing this Friday.
Friday, nine AM.
Perfect.
Up, upstairs in the community service.
This next, this coming Friday.
This coming Friday, third, May third. I know, it's May, the fifth month, oh my gosh, but anyway, that's all I really had. Excuse me.
Okay, on Wednesday, I had VA meeting upstairs. Proved claims and stuff. Uh, then I went to Ford Dodge for a Midas meeting on Wednesday. And we toured the new townhomes over on First Avenue South. Um, very impressive. Uh, he said that they were gonna rent for, they thought around nine hundred for a single bedroom. And a thousand for a two-bedroom.
What is on the?
And, uh, the two-bedroom I looked at wasn't very big in the bedrooms, it was smaller, but. Uh, they're nice laid out.
They're little two-story units, aren't they?
Yeah, it's two-story.
I've seen them down there, I've never been in them, but.
We, we toured four of them and everything looked good, so.
So that, are these like a cluster or they?
Yeah, it's like a row housing. I don't know how many units there is, but.
Uh, there's gonna be, I think he said twenty single bedrooms and eight two-bedrooms. Believe that's what he said. But, uh, they're pretty nice. Um. Then we'll discuss that, then. I finally got a call back from Pocahontas. In fact, I had to call her again. On Friday, talked to her about the sanitation. She said they have got applications in, but they wouldn't hire them, she says you don't send, uh, convicts into a home. And that's what she got a couple of convicts applied.
At least they're out there trying to get work. Yeah. And. Something that works well.
She said that she has talked to Sandy over in Wright County. And Palo Alto County to cover until she gets somebody hired. She did remind us that we had a twenty eighty agreement with her until July first. That can be broken, but it'd be July first time you get it broke.
That's like, that's only two months away.
We have to give them sixty days notice.
Yeah. It's only two months away.
I talked to Rick Rasmussen over in Wright, he said he would talk to Sandy over there and. Get back with us if she thought she could handle it, then maybe we could work her in. In the meantime, how many water supplies you got, one?
I have a water request. So should I refer it to that, to Sandy?
I'd tell Sandy, yeah.
Okay.
If she can do it. Cause that's close.
So then currently, if Sandy does it, she'll run it through Poki and then it'll bill us.
I think so.
That's the way it sounds, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And Rick hadn't got back with me yet, but it was, uh, Friday before I got to talk to him, I wanted to work for Pocahontas.
Well, he's got a lot of stress, flowers and his wife are open.
I know, I mean, I wanted to go, I didn't get to the open house.
So that's where that's at, uh. Kind of on hold, but I would get run.
This for us, Saturday, Sunday.
I usually go.
I know, I do, yeah.
Okay. After nine, let's open the bids for project seventeen fifteen oh seven and N twenty-two ninety. They're starting to get bids. How about this?
How do you do that?
Which, hey Ben, which one is what it's done, uh? I'm not sure which one is the. Seventeen fifteen seven. By Ford, Ford.
And that's one you're essentially helping.
No, this one is.
This is, oh, this is, okay.
Other country. And then the other one would be the one out by Bob Nellis. Okay. What's the?
Which one you're doing first?
The first one that I'm doing is Anderson Drainage and Excavation, this is the combined.
Combined, also, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all on left side?
Yes.
Okay.
In lieu of bid bond, we have a cashier's check for Humboldt County, the amount of ten thousand. Bid for the first project is two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Bid for the second project, two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. For a total of five hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. Five twelve eight three one. Five twelve eight three one even. The second bidder is White Men ink, Miles Iowa. DOT bid bond. Bid for the first project, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Bid for the second project, one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. For a total of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars even. Two eight seven six five five. Next bidder that we have is Ragnar's Brothers. Of Lake Mills. Bid for the first project, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. One three two eight three one twenty-five. Bid for the second project, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars even. For a total of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Two six seven, five six two, twenty-five.
Again, that was which company?
Ragnar's. Ragnar's. Next bidder is PCI, Rhinebeck Peterson Contractors Inc. Bid for the first project, one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, one four four two six six twenty-five. Bid for the second project, one hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars even. For a total of two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents, two nine zero. Four seven six twenty-five. Next contractor we have is Progressive Structures. What's that? Uh, Luxembourg Iowa.
New name, I haven't heard.
They did, they did the, our box out on, uh, down by Larry Vilkey's house.
Oh, that one?
That drop, in that box, yeah, they did that one for us. Okay, Iowa DOT bid bond. Simon Seal. Good for the first project, one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars even. One six zero three six five. Bid for the second project, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars even. For a total of three hundred and fifteen thousand, nine oh nine, it looks like. Next bidder is Midwest Contracting LLC with Martian Minnesota. The documents. Good for the first project, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars even, one four seven two four five. Good for the second project, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. For a total of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, two nine six five seven seven. And the last bidder is Nelson and Rock of Anoah, Iowa. Nelson and Rock Construction. Good bond. Good for the first project, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, one nine nine six four four. Good for the second project, two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. For a total of four hundred and five thousand, ninety dollars even, four oh five oh nine oh. That, that is all of the bidders, just quite a few this time.
Mm-hmm.
Next question. Who do you have for your parents? Thinking so.
Ragnar.
Ragnar's.
Ragnar's.
Too, it looks like Ragnar's.
Uh, tabs and everything, make sure everything, double check all the numbers, make sure everything's fine.
For approval next week.
We'll bring it back next week.
Okay.
For award. So what was the dates on this again? Uh, late start date is a year from now, beginning of May of twenty twenty-five.
Have this whole summer and fall, next spring.
Yes.
Necessary.
And they give you a very good bids.
Yeah, we did, great bids.
Well, thank you all for coming and your bids, it was quite a group. Yeah, well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very competitive, so it's great.
Yep.
Bring it back on Monday.
Really good, okay.
I had to do a lot of adding today.
Busy all day.
Do you have anything else for me? I have a question. Yes. I know we've talked about this before, where our piece, you know, up, uh, behind. Sentals that goes towards the sand construction.
That half road that we own.
Yeah. Oh, uh, the gravel?
Yeah, well, it's part blacktop.
Now it's, and the blacktop is very sketchy in places. That's not ours.
That's, that, that is all cities.
The city is, even from the trail around the corner? Yep. Okay. I believe, I believe so. Me, and I said, I thought that we had part, but I said, I will check. Uh, I'll have to double check on the maps, but I believe the only portion that the county owns a percentage of is the gravel. From the gravel around towards the. Where stops, where the stop sign is at, there, where it turns to blacktop, I believe, is where it switches. Cause I believe sands and all of them are all inside city limits. Cause I believe sands and all of them are all inside city limits.
Yep.
City map up on the wall, it kind of appears that way. It catches a little corner of the trail, I don't know if that's an accurate map or not, but.
Well, there's some pretty big holes. But you know, crazy. Dodging manufacturing or where it used to be.
Yeah.
You go towards the west east and flip over that trail. On one side, it's really bad and the other side is not much better, but I thought ours will not. It's, I mean, there's some holes in there. So I just thought if we could do anything with that, but if it's not ours.
I'll do some checking, um, look at some maps and see what, if we've got any kind of maintenance history on that, um. I'll touch Facebook cool with the city too. Look and see what our twenty eighty agreement is between the town and, and us.
All right, perfect. That's what I had.
See you build in that pole from the pole to the ditch out on the end of Gash Road. Right before the intersection.
Uh, so Mid-American couldn't, couldn't have hit it any better. They found a tile with the very last pole. Had the north and south and they, they hit it smack dab in the center. Um, Scott Becker is the farmer for that parcel and he called here two weeks ago, cause he had water bubbling up out of that tile around the pole, so we called in locates. Um, meanwhile, he went out there with a spade and just faded from the pole to the road dish, cause it was, it was running a couple hundred feet in the field to the intake. Um, and we got out there last Thursday or Friday and got it repaired.
Did it count there, Steve, mean or pseudo?
Private tile.
Private tile.
But you were able to repair it.
Yep. And then that gets filled back to Mid-American. Like I said, if they'd have gone two feet, yeah, two feet north or south, they'd have missed it, but they went right in the.
Well, but chances are doing that are.
Yeah. Yep, that's all repaired.
Good.
Fill back in it, repair it. Anybody got anything else for Ben?
Nope. Due this week is, uh, bids for the building on Thursday and I think, uh, quotes for the ag monitoring well closures. Is due tomorrow or Wednesday.
Guys out for the landfill. Yeah, so that way they can't come back and say, well, we need to test.
What they bid on that like this day? Which, what, what a well company bid.
We've got three or four.
So. Perfect. I didn't know how that worked when, I've never been on the.
So, awesome. Those two things will be getting turned in this week.
Yeah, very good ones on that too.